Good evening, everyone. We will call this listening session of the Bloomington City Council to order. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Good evening and welcome. Thanks for being here. We have four folks who called ahead to sign up. Sally signed up. Carol Gorgity?
Close.
Close? I'm sorry. Gorgerty.
You got it.
There we go. Brian Hoffman.
Yes.
And then Mike. I saw Mike List also earlier, I think. Okay, is there anybody else in the group that wishes to speak tonight? All right, so with our four speakers and the time that we have between now and 5:15, everybody will get about, you know, six, seven minutes or so, and we will go in the order that I just mentioned there. And to make sure that everybody gets the same amount of time and everybody gets the same listening opportunity, we're going to keep it close to the six or seven minutes. It might move by 30 seconds or so one way or the other, but that's what we're going to do. So, we have, we're ready. Sally, if you could, please come on up and sign in, of course, and state your name, and off we go.
Okay. Darrell Faruk is not complying with the disability parking state statute, and I find it hard to believe that the city staff and council do not know it. Again, the state statute states, quote, "A person shall not park a motor vehicle in or obstruct access to a parking space," unquote. The five buses temporarily standing, and they are not temporarily standing, they're there for, I'd say, 20 minutes and the whole area is blocked for 30, are obstructing, and the city and council should know it. In last week's listening session, a council member explained Darrell Faruk not complying with state statute by providing an example of an individual's noncompliance. An example of an individual's noncompliance does not explain or justify a property not complying with the state statute. Also, there was a comment on why the council should believe me. I am not asking the council to believe me. I'm asking the council to follow the state statute, to believe what they know to be true, and that is that public is not to park in or block disability parking if they do not have a permit, and to believe the ADA director of the state of Minnesota who states disability parking cannot be used for bus loading. Mayor and council, there is a copy of an email in front of you from the ADA director of the state of Minnesota. You all have a copy, should have a copy. Mayor, your copy was there? Okay, so Mayor, does the email state disability parking cannot be used for bus loading?
Sally, I haven't had a chance to read it. It was here when-
It's right there. Take a second. Anyone?
Thanks, Sally. Well-
Okay.
Thank you.
Could you read it? It's the first sentence on the email.
You can. Charge.
Thank you, Sally.
Permission.
Sally, you can, you could state what's in the email if you could, Sally. Why don't you state what's in the email?
Could you please read it? First sent-
Councilmember Rebus? You can if you would like, but don't take direction necessarily. We kind of follow the rules of decorum here as we try and keep decorum here in our listening session. So-
If I may, as the mayor mentioned it, I'm, please go ahead and read it. I already went through it, so if that's why you want to hear, I read it. However, I, please, just bear with me for a second.
Mayor, does the email state disability parking cannot be used for bus loading? The mayor says he hasn't read it. Anyone here read it so they can say, yes, I've read that? I sent an email to a few of you. Anyone here read it while we're sitting here?
Yeah.
Yes.
As I sit here, Sally, it does say, hello, Sally. Disability parking cannot be used for bus loading.
Thanks.
Spot and access hour must remain free from obstruction at all times.
Yes, the ADA director of the state of Minnesota states disability parking cannot be used for bus loading. I gave everyone a copy of plans for the parking lot at Darrell Faruk. Mayor, do the plans indicate bus parking by the front doors?
Sally-
Not reading? Just look at, anyone, just look at the plans. It takes a second. You can look at the plans right here. Buses are-
Sally, let me ask you this question. Let me ask you this question, Sally. What do the plans, in your mind, what do they indicate?
It indicates the buses are picking up and dropping off by the front door.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Sally, can I ask you?
Yes.
So, I've been thinking about this for the last couple of weeks as you've been coming here, and the piece that I feel like is missing is the Darrell Faruk piece. You clearly care a lot about Darrell Faruk and making sure that they're operating-
That's not, that's not pertinent. That's not pertinent.
Because what I'm trying to say is, can we have a conversation, or facilitate a conversation with you as a resident who clearly cares about their parking and making sure that their students have access so that their administration knows as well? Because I think at this point, the conversation is just between, been between us and you, and so we want to make sure that they're included in this conversation and with the neighbor who truly cares about them as well.
You know, the way that I believe this worked before, you know, I read minutes for several years, and a person like me would go up to the city and say, hey, there's a concern over there. Oh, we'll get you in touch with planning, planning, and you will discuss it. So, I'd be discussing this with planning, and it's like, planning, you know, you have bus parking here, and you have disability. The other map, you guys both have it on one sheet, the other map has the disability parking down on the south end. This is compliant. This is state statute compliant. Yeah. So, what happened? Why didn't planning? And nobody's reached out to me. The mayor first says, call the police, which this isn't a police matter. This is a planning. This is a city matter. There's, you don't put disability parking where buses are picking up and dropping off, and that's not-
Could we connect you and Darrell Faruk just to make sure that we were all kind of together and working through this?
No, there's no reason, this would be a city item. City would be, I mean, cities should be contacting me and going, okay, we looked at it. I mean, should be contact-
I will pass this on to our planning. I don't know, who knows if they've even seen this? I know they haven't seen your email from the disability director, so we'll pass this on to planning. We'll have a response at the next meeting, and I want a response from you, Sally, at some point as to why this is so important to you.
First of all, just to remind you, when I first brought this up, it was, you said you didn't know about it, and I'm like, I sent you an email, and you actually had replied to that email, so you had known about it. So, yes, your staff does know about this, and I believe I-
And I will ask them for their interpretation of what you have here in front of us. I will ask them for that interpretation.
Can I ask a quick, just a clear question?
Please.
So-
Running out of time here, very quickly.
Is this something, like, was this a new change? Is that why all of a sudden you're very concerned about it, or has this been an ongoing? Like, I don't understand, like-
It's kind of, yeah, my question.
Like, I don't under, like, school year is well underway. Did they just recently move the bus pick-up-and-drop-off location?
This is an ongoing concern, and specifically, it ties into me being in my neighbor's driveway to let the city know, so I'm telling the city what I'm seeing. I'm just going to document because the city says something different, so I need pictures to show what's really going on over there. And the officer comes up to my car in my neighbor's driveway. My neighbor comes out, says she has permission to be there, and then-
We're out of time.
And then we end up with a, eventually, the city asking the Hampton County to prosecute me. So, yeah, ongoing.
Carol.
So, thank you for letting me take some time to speak.
Absolutely.
Obviously, for my attire, it does address the Nine Mile Creek and just my thoughts around there, so I appreciate the opportunity to this venue. So, I'm just going to start and be a little more lighthearted and speak from Dr. Seuss. So, for tonight, I am the Lorax, and I speak for the trees. So, first of all, I loved this. When my Bloomington briefing came and I saw that we're encouraging replacing trees, I was thrilled to see it. But speaking around the trees and the environment, you know, we all know they can renew our air supply. An acre of trees will produce the amount of oxygen consumed by 18 people annually. An acre of trees can remove up to 2.6 tons of carbon dioxide each year. And breaking it down even more, according to the USDA, just one large tree can provide a day's supply of oxygen for up to four people. A third of our global emissions yearly are absorbed by trees. Even small amounts of air pollution contribute to health issues that affect our society as a whole. So, along with planting new trees, which is fantastic, I think we also need to consider how valuable old growth trees are. Planting new trees is fantastic, but old growth trees hold much larger amounts of carbon impollutants, so they have much more of an impact. They remove 10 times the air pollution of young trees, 90 times the carbon storage, and they have 100 times the leaf area size. Why is that leaf area size so important? They also help to lower the air temperatures that cool our streets and city. And here was the big word that I got to learn while I was doing my research. They control climate through evapotranspiration, where water is drawn through the soil by the roots and evaporates from those larger leaves. Studies suggest that we need at least 40% canopy coverage to combat the heating effects of concrete in cities. That's often referred to as that heat island effect. We also talk about by the creek, we want water quality, and we want to stabilize and prevent erosion. The tree roots do that for us naturally. They also help to purify any rainwater coming through the soil, so they're helping with that water quality. They provide housing to millions of species, and I know the last listening session, we talked a little bit about Nine Mile Creek being so high in biodiversity. Well, a lot of those species protect us from disease. They keep our soil healthy with decomposing leaves by retaining water in that soil, so not only are they helping from erosion on a flood year, but in a drought year, they're helping to retain some of that moisture. They support the ecosystem even after they die. They provide a habitat for many animals, and, you know, some of those coyotes that I don't necessarily want in my yard with my dogs, they live down there as well. Our world is stressful. Trees also benefit mental and physical well-being. They say that even spending a few minutes outside can reduce our blood pressure, relieve stress, and help to build our immune system and also to ease our mind during stressful times. So, I'm going to get you back on track time-wise. That was what I wanted to come and share with you. So, just in closing, really, I just hope that we're very thoughtful when we're planning Nine Mile Creek, and we take into account trying to preserve what we have because it would take an awful lot of time to get it back.
I couldn't agree more. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. Did you say your name?
Carol Gorgity. Sorry.
Carol, I did want to just say thank you and totally agree, and I think this council and the staff that we have here in Bloomington chose Nine Mile to be one of the three projects for the local option sales tax for a reason, because we're absolutely committed to that, to restoring that natural space. But I also wanted to just make sure that you're aware of the tree canopy project that we're going to be undergoing across the city of Bloomington, and so there's a lot of really good work happening, not just at Nine Mile, but across the community to try to address ongoing issues within invasive species, but also mapping that canopy and making sure that we're replacing, obviously, the older, the older tree.
I really depressed my neighbor last year because I had to take down two, so I realize it's a necessity sometimes to get rid of diseased or old and-
We have many coming down in my neighborhood right now. It's imperceptible, like, makes me cry every time, so, yeah.
Did you want me to sign in?
If you could. Yes. Thank you. Brian Hoffman.
I'll get out of your way, Brian.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Council Brian Hoffman. And first of all, I very much respect that the council holds these sessions. They're not easy, I know. And the second part of that is, it's unfortunate that I feel like I have to be here. Just to give you some perspective, I'm going to talk tonight a little bit about organization, culture, and delivery and responsive quality service. I think it's the foremost thing a city can do. And from a perspective on that, as I, my parents moved here in '61, I was a little kid on the east side of Nine Mile Creek, grew up playing down there, went through school at Jefferson, moved away, came back about 30 years ago, had our daughter, raised her, who now moves six blocks away, and now has our grandson. So, you know, definitely have loved the city and many things about it. I've also worked in municipal government for 40 years, five different cities, including the city of Bloomington many years ago. So, that's the perspective I'm going to share this with you, and I've had a number of situations over the past few years that have just reached a level of frustration but also concern because I think it's, unfortunately, might be telling a direction of what's happening that council may not be even aware of. When a resident is trying to reach out to the city, it's very hard, and the lack of responsiveness has been appalling at times. I have a number of situations. I have sent, there was a situation down at the stairway to the creek, it was down from 105th down to the creek, and there's a set of terrorist erosion control steps, landings there. I remember sending pictures and emails and trying to reach out to people, not just staff, but also the management team here, with no response. And it took me a little bit to everybody's direct email. When I raised that to Councilmember Lohman after a knock meeting that I served on, he was talking about, well, you know, this is something that council has to put on a capital improvement program or whatever, and I'm sitting there going, this is regular maintenance that the city staff should be aware of, they should be thinking about this stuff, planning it, and presenting, these are the types of things we have to do to maintain it. I got a little upset because my wife fell on these because they're very unsafe. Now, it's sat there for years, there's nobody acting on it, nobody doing this. And other situations, street repair happens, technicians, contractors doing some things that are not correct. In fact, it made my driveway so it was undrivable, had to be torn out, redone. I was trying to say, why don't we do it right? And there's like no response. I've had problems with work in the right of way, where contractors are basically doing undergrounding, destroying a big, beautiful sugar maple when they didn't have to, because I'm quite familiar with the process and the digging and the exposure of electrical and so forth, and the operator could care less. And they said, the city doesn't care about this, and when I contact the city staff, it's like, well, the contractor can do what they want. Well, I'm sorry, but there's value in trees, there's value in all this, and when I finally come down to city hall and talk to somebody, I didn't get much of a response. Recently, there was another instance with another undergrounding contractor, and I wasn't, I had people's cards, I was sending emails and voicemails with no response. I came in to talk to the city manager about this because now this seems to be a pattern with response, and Safa was, I met her, and she was probably the exactly, the example of how customer service should be in my mind, very helpful understanding and wanting to know what can we do. There are situations going down at the Central Park, Moyer Park and area, where you put in trees last spring, very dry year, it's great to replant some trees, and I'm watching them wilt, and I go down there all the time, and there's a park employee, full-time employee down there almost every day, and it's just like, could you water the trees maybe? Well, we don't water trees. Well, most people know that a one-and-a-half-inch little sapling city in there last summer is not going to grow, and by fall, they were pretty much dead. Where is the care of thinking, hey, maybe we should get some drip bags and put some water in them every week? I have a hard time believing that the city doesn't have the staffing resources to do this. I think it's a matter of care, of attention, to detail to the job, what needs to be done. And that direction really starts with the council policy, and it's up to the management team to implement and hold staff accountable. It's not always the what, but it's the how. You've done a lot of great things, programs, get some headlines, get some things going, but how is it implemented? Okay? Does it just stop? How does it really come through? So, how are we delivering service? What is the expectation of responsive quality service at the staff level to the resident? I think that if you have that in a city, there's a lot of trust, and there's a lot of support for the organization. This last spring, summer, there's been a lot of talk in the neighborhood, there's been a lot of talk with groups now, but of course, the Nine Mile Creek, and I'm hearing almost everybody say, I don't really trust the city anymore. It's a warning sign, folks. It has to do with being transparent, being clear. Posted, let's make sure the correct information is posted and available when people request it. So, all of these things, you know, I could go on with some examples because there are more, but I think that emphasizes the point, and I just wanted to share that with council because I really think it can set the tone going forward. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Councilmember Delson, no question?
If I may, Mr. Hoffman, you are, your comments are well timed. If you pay attention to the meeting later tonight, we are going through the service level agreement that we have been working on for Parks and Recreation. You're right, that was in place prior to Ann Kettrey coming on board in, what, 2019? She and her staff have been working for years to try to pull that together. I know things don't move as fast as we like. There was a pandemic in the middle of all that, if you can remember that, but as part of the Parks Master Plan, one of the big pieces of that was, we can't just put money into those parks, we actually have to have a plan for maintaining them and dealing with the service. So, if you want to take a look at the packet tonight, if you want to pay attention to the meeting tonight or watch it later on YouTube or whatever, I'd love your feedback, I think we all would, on what you hear out of that and if you feel like that's moving in the right direction. It's service level agreements, how often are they in the parks, what kind of maintenance they're doing, how we're going to be able to hold them accountable for doing that, et cetera. So, I don't know, I mean, maybe you don't, you feel like it's too late, that's fine, but I do think we're putting in front of you something that you could react to that might be in line with what you're thinking, so love to get your feedback.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. It sounds like the right direction.
Right on.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nelson.
Good thinking, Mayor. Just a quick question. You mentioned contractors that were harming trees and things. Was that recently, and do you know which contractors?
That was this spring. It was the undergrounding for-
The fiber optics.
It was like, no, that essentially was for Comcast.
For Comcast, so, okay, thank you, because that is an ongoing issue that I know staff is aware of, and there have been both the fiber optics and Comcast, and Comcast is maybe a little bit better, but there are some new people that have been in the city doing work that we don't have as good a relationships with, and staff is working on that, so thank you for reiterating that. That is an ongoing problem. We have, I think all of us have heard from residents and constituents that have had issues like yours, had people jumping over fences into their backyard and starting to cut down trees to run lines, just stuff that should not be happening, and I know that we're working on it, so thank you for reiterating that. It's something that I know our staff is aware of and working on, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Appreciate your time. So, we'll see you Wednesday.
Mike List, Mike, are you out there?
Hi, Mike List, Bloomington, Minnesota. Address is 10313 Fifth Avenue Tower. Just following up on, just a couple of clarifications. Two, I mean, I think I know you, you know the topics that I'm talking about. One of them is just the characterization that it's just one person that had caused many of the things that have happened over the last three years, and I just want to make sure that's not the case. I mean, this has been ongoing for three years. It was just finally, we'd had enough, so, which really draws into question, it's only been there for three years, and that kind of pulled the cases, and there's been 62 911 calls from this facility, and 57 of them are from staff. That's not neighbors calling to complain, that's 57 from staff. That means that they're overwhelmed, they are not able to control the people that are there, and it has, I mean, if you, if you look at everything that's been going on there, and I'm not going to go into all the details because I'm trying to be respectful because I want this to be a conversation, I want there to be a solution that is broader, broader than just my situation, but broader in terms of the community. Are we going to deal with this? What are going to be the rules that we're going to put in place? How do we communicate these things and get this, to get the appropriate solution in place? We're, in my opinion, we're not even close, and for, and I've been trying to be very measured, trying to be, I don't want this to be a political topic because I want a solution. If I wanted to make this political, I could have made this very messy in a hurry. That's not my goal, and I just feel the conversational tone was, well, let's just give it another year. That's not working toward a solution. That's, I'm trying-
Our last conversation, Mr. List, I think the, first of all, I don't think anybody ever thought of it as just one person. I don't think that was ever, I know it's a group home, so a group of folks, and I think our last conversation, rather than give it another year, I think we had asked Chief Hodges to send a squad over and have the discussion with the residents and with the household itself, basically about being good neighbors this summer, trying to, you know, at least set some expectations from a, from a, an official standpoint within the city. And Mr. Brugge, did that happen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I know that our, our police department asked the officer who's worked on that to go make a stop, and I do know that he visited not just the group home in your neighborhood, but several group homes to have those conversations. I, he's on vacation this week, so we didn't get a report back from him about all those , I was out for a time before that, so I'll check with Officer Daniels how the conversation went, but he's attentive to the issue with group homes and our police department and our environmental health continue to be. This is not necessarily related to your concerns, but just as a heads up for the council, there's a bill that's working its way through the legislature right now that would restrict cities' abilities to license group homes because of concerns in other communities that they are, the licensing is creating a barrier to group homes being there. For us, we think the licensing is really important because it allows our environmental health staff to make sure that people have safe, decent, sanitary housing, and we're concerned about that bill, but it also gives us at least a little bit of influence in terms of how the homes are operated. So, we're watching that closely, we're concerned about that bill because we don't think it's necessarily good for neighborhoods, and I know that our staff are continuing to be attentive.
Right, and to be honest with you, that's one of the reasons why I'm here, because if you read the article, it was specifically, you know, pointing to the neighborhood, saying they're just complaining and they don't want this in their backyard, and I want to make very sure, very clear, 57 calls from one facility in three years because the staff is overwhelmed because they're not appropriately trained. Either you have a training issue or you have a mix, right, of, you know, what's allowed within the facility, and how do you, how do you manage it? How is that being screened? How is that being done? And, you know, and I guess the other, the other reason I kind of pointed to is, one of the caseworkers, you know, so just kind of a summary of the 62, if you want the numbers, 57 staff calls, two of them, or three of them, or excuse me, three of them were finally when, you know, the neighborhood got tired of being threatened by the staff, they just started calling 911 on parking problems versus trying to say, hey, can you park appropriately? So, they just, you know, and the other one was just the incident that I, finally, I'm just like, I'm done with this, and came forward and got you guys on. And so, those are the, those are the calls, so it's not the neighborhood that is, that is contacting people. I mean, we're dealing with it, and, you know, I mean, the incident that we talked about, that took place, this person was in crisis, in crisis for two months, where my wife would go outside, she'd come back inside going, I have no idea what's going on. And finally, it just, my neighbor made one statement, language, please, and it triggered him. He just went off, and he ended up by having to go back to the hospital for new medication for appropriate treatment, and this person was there for two months, and staff did nothing. So, part of this is not only the neighborhoods, but making sure the people are being treated appropriately, and-
We're running close on time, and I say this one council question, and then we'll keep-
Yeah, two, two things. First off, you mentioned an article, what, to what article are you referring?
There was an article, Star Tribune, this weekend.
Okay, this weekend.
Yeah, specifically talking about group homes and taking away the ability-
Related for the-
And the context was that people are trying to-
Yep, understood.
Limit them.
So, and this might be for city manager, how often do we renew those licenses today? Are they yearly renewals?
Mr. Mayor, council members, yeah, they are. And they get inspected annually.
So, so, do we have a track record of, I mean, if there's been 62 911 calls to this home, that's, that's obviously far and away much more than most of the group homes that we have in the city, right?
Actually, Mr. Mayor and council members, I just spoke with our EH manager on Friday, and Mike, I'd be happy to look at the list, and I can get the list as well.
And I've got it, I can sort it out, yeah. And I thought I could see it, yes.
At least in 2023, that particular home was not in the top three of group homes that generated activity. We have, we have a pretty well-structured process for determining what constitutes a nuisance property. And it's when it, when we get to that level of certifying whether something constitutes a nuisance is when we would start to take action. Uh, a lot of the calls that are generated, that Mike knows this, um, some of them relate to specific individuals in the group home. That, you know, we, we work with the operators uh, to try and make sure that they're managing safely and appropriately. But it's also just other impacts on the neighborhood, like the parking that you referenced or whether a property is well maintained. So there's a whole spectrum of things that generate calls from group homes.
So we're, we're past time, you know, so just wrap this up. I think we will do that. Uh, Phil, thank you. Thanks for coming in.
It will, and just one, five quickly. It was just the character, characterization in one of the, and so your police department had a call where they did a random check right after that incident. So I, I certainly appreciate that and I, and I see that, right? I see that in the data. Um, she just made the, the following comment, which I mean, it's just kind of, kind of hurts me to some extent. Um, and she's just saying, I can't keep moving residents because the neighbors are complaining about medical issues.
So somebody from home, like?
Yeah, the operator.
Okay.
But that's, it wasn't the case. We never called.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you much. Over time here by a couple of minutes. 13, look for a motion to adjourn our listening session tonight.
So moved.
On favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned, we'll see you downstairs very quickly here.
Something a lot of the work, I've sent you the, and I've screen scraped them down to the ones that maybe. Person that.
Yeah.
About a, I mean, it's be a trade.
Copy this?
Yes.
I got one.
And then that's my point is. At that point.